Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, May 27th. I apologize for the late start. We just came from executive session where we discussed many things, including SRO agreement, board and commission, committee vacancies, and potential acquisition of property. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. We're gonna do the public hearing first, then we'll take a few things out of order, but I know there are some people here for the public hearing. So the first item on our agenda is a public hearing on a proposed local law amending Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code concerning seasonal leaf blower restrictions. So can I have a motion and second, please, to open the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crumb?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Maybe, Chris, a little background on the legislation, and then we'll welcome any public comments.
Yes. Back in April of 2023, the village board established a local law that put a seasonal leaf blower ban in the village, established that from May 1st through October 30th of each year for all properties under five acres, and for properties over five acres, they can apply for an exemption or extension. But this really, the focus here has to do with a different portion of local law that requires warnings be issued prior to tickets being issued. And the police have advised us that they would prefer that the discretion be left up to the police officers, because there's not currently an effective way of tracking when they're in the field and doing patrol. So there's not really a good way to know whether or not a warning's been issued on a particular property, you know, when they're out there making those decisions. So, you know, just like when there's other enforcement, you know, the police officers have to make decisions in the field, they tend to, it's a small community, they tend to know repeat violators when they're coming in, and that's, you know, the idea here is to get everyone in compliance, hopefully give warnings, and then if they don't follow the warnings, then the tickets be issued. The problem comes into play again about whether or not a warning's been issued, and since it's in the code, we have to then prove, if it goes to court or somebody challenges, that a warning has been issued on a particular property. So it just makes it more cumbersome, and the police is asking for more flexibility in their enforcement procedures.
Thank you, Chris. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Okay. I stand corrected. Any comments from the board? Trustee Heiser?
I am against this. I think warnings are essential. I can't believe that the police cannot keep track of warnings. I mean, we live in a computer age. It's very difficult for me to believe that the police cannot keep track of warnings, because otherwise, what you're saying is if police officer A gives a warning to somebody, and the next day, police officer B goes to that property, how will B know that A gave a warning? If we don't have some sort of system. Otherwise, you could get virtually unlimited warnings.
Right, and I think the intention of this is to, right, is to remove the warning
Right, from the code.
From the code.
Not that they wouldn't issue a warning, it's just that the warning wouldn't be code required.
And so they could theoretically skip the warning and just give a summons right away?
Yes.
I'm not quite sure if I were a property owner. You see, to me, speeding is something that's intuitive. We all know when we get a driver's license, thou shalt not speed. I don't think all our residents fully understand what the code is vis-à-vis gas leaf blowers. And so then what you're gonna do is, depending upon how smooth a talker you're dealing with, you can convince the police officer, oh, I had no idea that I couldn't do this. And so I just, I don't understand what the problem is about giving a warning. I just, I can't fathom this.
Maybe Chief Dengler could come up and kind of talk this out a little bit? If you don't mind, just bring the mic over, so, thank you.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
All right, so with our current records management system, there is no tab for warnings issued for various violations. Maybe in the future, with a new one, there might be. But in order for people to actually know, they'd have to communicate with people that were here prior in the week and continuously update it.
But in that case, if you don't give a warning, how will they ever know that somebody has already used their discretion not to give a summons?
You wouldn't.
I'm just, unless the same police officer is constantly patrolling the same property all the time.
Right.
But if there's any deviation from that, the second police officer who might be passing by...
Could just issue a summons and call it a day.
And if I were the property owner, I'd go, well, what happened to discretion? I mean, I'd be arguing about discretion all the time.
You could go down to the Rye Town Court and state your case with the judge.
An attorney, I love the idea of discretion if I were defending somebody, because you could almost always argue abuse. I really like the idea of, no, you get a warning if you do this.
Well, I don't think there's an issue with issuing a warning, it's just tracking it. And if it's removed from the code, that still gives you the flexibility. You can still issue them a warning and use your discretion.
And if you give a warning and it can't be tracked, what is the meaning of it, then?
The certain officer that day just decided that it wasn't, you know, it wasn't plausible to give a summons because of the explanation that they got from the resident.
As a quick question, why wouldn't we have the ability to track warnings? Why don't we?
It's not built into the system.
Electronically, but paper-wise, I'm sure we could.
When you say this, Mayor?
The current RMS system.
So when you say the system, you're talking about the system that the officers are accessing in the field?
Correct, like where we record all of our reports.
Oh, so that not the ability necessarily to see it at the station, but then necessarily to pull up a report in the field?
How many warnings were issued for the week? There's no way to track it currently.
So, Mayor, in, can I follow up?
Please, Chris.
So in the absence of not having that in the system, what have the officers been doing since the law's been in effect?
Trying to give guys the heads up, hey, certain properties have been warned, others haven't, you know, try...
Verbal, or?
Verbal.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Crumb?
I see Trustee Heiser's point. If it was just the landscapers, I would feel differently, I think. The landscapers are definitely well aware of the law.
True.
I would also say in support of not having a warning, that most municipalities only have a warning for the first few months of the new law, once it's well-publicized. I do have mixed feelings also without the paper helping us get the word out. You know, we've seen some of our events with less attendance recently, because I'm just guessing, the paper's not out there helping us get the word out to some of these things, so...
Could be.
Again, the landscapers, I don't think need a warning anymore, they're well aware. The residents, though, one thing that might, can I continue with another?
Please, please.
Comment? One thing that might sort of kill two birds with one stone, could we have a tiered, the way it is now, the penalty is up to $250. Period, end of discussion. A lot of municipalities have a tiered system to help sort of underline the importance of it, and it starts low and it ratchets up. Could we have a very, very low initial one? If we had no warning, and had a very, very low initial dollar amount, it would almost be like a warning, but it would be, it would be trackable, obviously, if we had a $25 thing.
A summons was written, yes.
And then it would be like 25, 150, 300, or something like that, and...
Yeah, the board would have to redo the fee schedule in regards to it, but...
But can I clarify one item?
Yeah.
So if you have, when a police officer issues a ticket, they're either gonna pay it, or they're going to, they have to go to court. They have to go to fight it and go to court. The issue here is if it's in a fee schedule, it doesn't go to court. Because the court, when it goes to court, it's the judge's discretion, I guess, to say, you have to pay the fine, or don't have to pay a fine. But when it's in a fee schedule, that means they have to come to us, and they have to, it's, there's not a hook to make sure that it gets paid, in other words.
Would that also fall on the village prosecutor?
Right, yeah. So you'd have to do that, and then if they don't pay it, I guess, bring them to court at that point. But it's not something that we would be able to, like, when you do work without a permit, for instance, that permit, you can't clean up the permit until you pay the fine for the work without a permit, or a stop work order. So that's your hook, you know, you can't move ahead unless you pay it. Here, if it's not paid, we'd have to determine, you know, what would be the way that you would have to enforce it, then, if they don't pay the fine.
Valid question.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying, the statute now, as I understand it, it, the noise, the leaf blower thing refers back to the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance has a paragraph on fines, and imprisonment, frankly.
Yeah.
And it says the fine is up to $250.
Which is standard for court, yeah.
So I'm just saying, I'm just changing the schedule. Does that mean that all of a sudden it's different? They don't have to go to court, or?
They would, yeah, you wouldn't go to court, huh?
You would still have to go to court.
Yeah, unless it's paid to the village, in which case there's no hook to make sure it gets paid.
I guess I'm not following.
So we, if, so I think, I think what's, I think what's trying to be said, if, and I guess just as a question that may clarify things, if we were to define the fees, it wouldn't, would that make it exempt from going to court? I mean, it's... Can you not define fees? Can you not define the fines?
No, of course you can.
For something that's going...
There's plenty of different items that are defined by...
So the answer is, we believe you can do it in the local law, it would have to be by local law. Just realize, in order to update it, you would have to modify the law anytime you change those fees. So it is an option. You would have to list it, and then the police officers would go send it to court, and the court would then, you know, either gonna pay it, or they're going to have to go to court to challenge it. But the fees would be identified in your local law, which is only established after a public hearing. So it's different than, it operates different than the fee schedule. It's not something like you'd look at the schedule every year and said, we should modify it. If you want to modify it, you have to hold a new public hearing and have a new local law drafted.
Right.
Just trying to clarify.
Well, right now, is all it says is the fine is up to $250.
And that's the standard language.
I'm just trying to go to Trustee Heiser's issue of, I didn't know, you know, we don't, we can't evidently, the way our software works now, we have trouble with warnings. And I'm trying to sort of figure out a way to ease the pain, well, you should have known, it's been on the books. This law is two years old now, by the way, right? You know, you should have known, it's been a law for two years, or whatever the number of months it's been. And, but this is your first time, it's only $50 this time. And then, but obviously, that's not enough to maybe deter someone that really wants to abuse the law.
Then if you get the multiple, all right, I'm curious, yeah, Trustee Epstein?
Are we finding the homeowner or the landscaper?
Either one.
Either one or both?
Either one or both.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what it's, why it's a bit tricky.
It is tricky, because I can tell my, I've shared with my landscaper what he should be using.
Right, but if he shows up and you're not home...
And I'm not even there, I can't say, now turn that off. So I guess that is my next question.
Right.
Who's, I mean, ultimately, they're gonna charge the homeowner if they have to pay a fine. On the other hand, have we sent out, I've asked this, I think, before, have we sent out notices to the landscaping community?
Yes, and they were, if you remember, they were involved when we were dropping this.
There are a lot of other small guys, too.
Yeah, and, but I mean, like Trustee Crumb said, I mean, it's been two years that this has been in effect. I think, and I think, you know, maybe this brings up another point, that maybe at our Rybrook birthday celebration, we may want to have, whether it be the Sustainability Committee, or whether it be staff, maybe have some information on this. You know, just to make sure it's reaching another group of people. I'm just saying, especially if we're considering changing this. Now, I would say, you know, for purpose of this resolution that we have in front of us, I think if we were to create this fee, I'm not sure I would want to do this, you know, right now. Although I guess we could, it's...
No, if you're modifying the local law, adding fees, you would have to adjourn the...
Have a separate hearing.
No, you would have to adjourn the public hearing.
Renotice it?
Renotice, no, you don't have to renotice it, because you're modifying the local law. You just have to modify the local law, has to be in place for 10 days.
Okay.
Before you can act on it, because it's, that's a substantial change.
Okay, so I see kind of two options, three options, really. One is that we, we don't approve this resolution, or we, you know, we say that we're not gonna approve this resolution, we go back to the drawing board and think of something else. Another would be to approve this resolution for now, removing the warning, making it easier for the police to enforce without having this official warning. And I think part of the, not having the official warning is that it's without, without actually handing them out, it's tougher to defend in court, correct?
Well, because it requires a warning, so you'd have to prove, you'd have to prove it.
So we'd have to prove it, we'd have to prove the warning. So we could potentially pass this for now, but make it our intent to then, at the next meeting, the meeting after, make some changes. But if this is the will of the board.
Once again, my feeling is that if we are serious about gas leaf blowers, if we are, it seems to me that we should be able to warn people, these are the consequences of your continued use of a gas leaf blower in a season when you're not supposed to do it.
Right.
And I think a warning, it should not be up to the police officer to say, well, you know, I understand that this person didn't know. No, 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 it's, excuse me. The law's been on the books for two years, your landscaper should have known, and you can't get away with this anymore, it's a warning. The next time this happens, the following things occur in terms of fines. And I like the idea of a warning, because it puts the person on notice as to what the consequences are of future misbehavior.
Trustee, what do you think? I think we go back to the drawing board and rethink it all again. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe a warning. I don't know.
Again, the fourth option, Mayor, the fourth option is, I don't think you said that, which is simply not acting on it, direct the staff and council to redraft a local law that would put it into the code, so it would have to be approved by a local law, so that with the fees specifically in the code, you can consider it and look at it that way. Maybe the first one is not a warning, but a very de minimis fine or something.
Right, and I think, and I think...
For tracking purposes.
Right, that's how you check.
The sense I'm getting from the board right now is that I don't think there is a will to necessarily vote in favor of this currently. Am I reading that wrong?
No.
You could have figured me out.
Needs a little more work, perhaps.
Okay, but if you...
So we are going to...
Either to adjourn the public hearing, or just close the public hearing and don't act.
We're gonna adjourn the public hearing.
Okay.
We're not gonna take action on the resolution. I'd like for us to explore the option of de minimis fine on the first, on the first one, but also look into whether there's a way to track warnings. Whether there's a way that we can...
Before we make that decision, right?
Right, because the local law, as it reads right now, allows it to be, you know, where you get a written warning on the first events.
Right.
And if we can find a way that we can track that and prove that, then it may solve this issue.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
So you should adjourn it to a state-specific, otherwise you have to renotice.
Let's not, the next meeting, let's go two meetings out.
Okay.
Yep.
So the second meeting in June.
Should have a motion in a second.
Yeah, so can I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Adjourn this to the second meeting in June.
That's amended second.
Now, it doesn't mean that we may, doesn't mean that we, I mean, we may end up right back where we are after we look at things and see where they stand, and what other possibilities may be. But I think, I think this board isn't ready to act on this.
Nope. Fair enough.
Just for the record, it's June 24th.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crumb?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Thank you. All right, resolution number two, which is gonna be resolution number one, I guess. Considering authorizing insurance carrier for the village of Rybrook.
Whereas after comparing details of the coverages, the village's risk manager, RJ Impastato of Fola &amp; Sun Corp., and the village administrator recommend the village board select Travelers Insurance for property liability, law enforcement liability, umbrella auto, public officials, and crime coverage at a total estimated annual premium of $314,272. And whereas the village's risk manager and administrator recommend that Cowbell National Specialty Insurance Company provide cyber insurance coverage at a total estimated annual premium of $4,697. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Travelers as the village's insurance company for property liability, law enforcement, umbrella, auto, public officials, crime, and cyber insurance cover, sorry, and insurance coverages, and Cowbell National Specialty Insurance Company for cyber insurance coverage. Be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorize to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Sure.
All right, Chris, a little background?
Sure, and RJ Impastato is here, and he's able to, from Fola &amp; Sun's, he can go over the process of the renewals. And again, there, he is our broker at this point, and of record. And we just, you should, if you want, he can come up here and summarize the increases and the types of coverage that we have.
Eric is definitely taller than I am. Good evening, Mayor, the board, thank you for having us. My name is RJ Impastato, to my right is Michael Goldman, my colleague. We are, as the village administrator meant, we are the village insurance broker. Proud to be that. We specialize in insuring municipal municipalities in Westchester. Just to name a few, not to waste the village's time. Village of Bronxville, Village of Scarsdale, Town of Northcastle, Town of Newcastle, Town of North Salem, many others. So this is, this is what we do. I've been insuring municipalities for 22 years now. The, as the village administrator mentioned, there's actually three policies that come up for renewal on June 1. Insurance policies are one year in length, so it's from June 1 to June 1. The first policy is a package insurance policy. They call it a package because it has many different coverages inside this one policy, including property insurance, automobile insurance, general liability insurance, public officials insurance, employment practice insurance, and law enforcement, to name the key ones. The particular policy is currently with Travelers. The prior broker, two of us, had actually submitted this for quotation to two other insurance companies, National Union and Munich Insurance Company, both reputable insurance companies that are A-plus, I see a not over there, an A-plus rated company, so they're financially very stable, they've been around for many years. They were not able to be competitive to the village's current policy. Specifically, the village carries $10 million in umbrella limits, and these two other insurance companies could only provide five. So they were not gonna be as competitive. We were able to make changes with the Travelers. So the original quote that the Travelers had for this policy for the renewal was $321,000. The actual, after the changes, dropped by $8,000 to $313,802 plus tax. Any questions on this coverage? Excellent. The other two policies is coming up, one is cyber insurance, and Mike Goldman, my colleague specializes in this, so he was gonna speak to it.
So the cyber insurance, we had originally got a quote for it from Cowbell Insurance, the incumbent insurance company, so the same one that the village had last year. The original quote came in at $5,218, that's including the tax. And we were successfully able to renegotiate the quote for $4,697. In addition to this, we were able to secure increased social engineering and reverse social engineering. These previously, last year, were at $100,000 limits, and we were able to get them increased this year to $250,000. Additionally, we were also able to add computer hardware replacement coverage. Last year it was at $50,000, this year it was increased to $100,000. And then an additional breach response coverage was also added for $50,000. So this is additional breach response coverage. This is an extra $50,000 in coverage that would work separately from the aggregate limit for the liability coverage.
Not cyber insurance.
That's cyber, yeah.
And other than that, the rest of the coverages all remain the same as last year, the deductible's the same as well. So that's it for this.
Any questions on cyber insurance? Excellent. The last coverage, which is coming up, is the smallest of the premiums. The village maintains student accident, also for the recreation, for those who participate in the recreation programs of the village. If they did get hurt, they'd be able to have supplementary medical insurance to whatever the parents or guardians' regular health insurance. The expiring premium was $1,045 for the whole year. We were able to reduce it to $915 for the whole year. And that's the three coverages, yes?
I have a question, I'm sorry. What is social engineering coverage? I'm not familiar with cyber to a great degree, but I have no idea what that is at all.
Yeah, it's, the insurance industry did a horrible job naming it. If I could rename it, I'd call it trickery insurance. It's where a municipality gets tricked into giving money to a bad actor. So we had a village in Westchester, they had received a, the finance department had received a letter on a contractor's letterhead. It said, hi, you know me, we've been doing work, I've changed my bank account. And it was on the letterhead of the contractor, they knew it was right in town. And a couple days later, the same finance department got a phone call. Hi, I'm from Bubba Contracting. Did you get my, my letter? I'd like you to pay the bill on my, the correct bank account. And they thanked him, saying, thank you, we know it's not a fraud since you called us, and we already got your letter, so we'll be sure to give you the correct amount to your correct bank account. And they paid $75,000, and a week later, contractor called up and says, where's my money? He said, well, we sent it to your new bank account number, and they said, what do you mean? We don't have a new bank. So it's ways of tricking. We had another municipality, not to boy, that's all right, this is a good one. We had a finance department, got an email from the mayor, and it says, we've been sued, and our new law firm is asking for a retainer, I think it was 20 grand. It was not a berserk amount of money. Please go ahead and send the money to this direct deposit. So it was clear was on the mayor's email, and they did it. Mayor came in the following day, finances, we made sure to get that retainer to your new, to the company, and mayor says, I never sent an email. And it turns out, somebody had hacked in to the village's system and sent an email, as if it was the mayor, to the finance department, and finance didn't go ahead and question the mayor, and they released 20 grand.
That was their first...
The mayor has no such authority.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, and their first problem was listening to the mayor.
So it's really trickery insurance.
So I understand.
It's voluntarily.
And reverses?
Reverse, actually, may, I've got one recently, is I got a text, apparently from the New York State Department of DMV.
A lot of those were going around on a lot of people.
Now, apparently, I have unpaid tickets, I must quickly call and/or give money to have this paid and not to be... So they actually go ahead and get the innocent victim to reach out to them. And that's called reverse social engineering.
So scams.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and it's a good point for any of our residents listening to this. Beware of anything, any email, any text that you're getting. These are the complicated and very well-thought-out, very, you know, tech-savvy... These are the complicated and very well thought out, very, you know, tech savvy scams that are, that are hitting everyone everywhere. All right, any other questions on the insurance renewals? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I think we have a motion second on the resolution? All right.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Crum?
Yes.
Trusty Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three, considering the appointment of motor equipment operator.
Now therefore be resolved that Michael DeCresenzio of eighty-seven Avon Circle, apartment B, is hereby appointed to the position of motor equipment operator with the village of Rybrook, subject to the, subject to the results of a medical, sorry, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York in accordance with the offer letter dated May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And be it further resolved that the annual salary is one oh three oh five five with an effective start date of June first, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Paul, Michael Noack, anyone want to come up?
Go ahead.
Mike's right here. Yeah, Mike's right here.
I know, maybe you wanted to say a nice word about him first, Paul. I know you love to speak in public.
Very good. So good evening, members of the board. Welcome our new MEO, Mr. DeCresenzio. I want to say thank you for this opportunity. He's been with the village for over twenty years, I believe.
Twenty-two, next month, I believe.
Twenty-two years next month. He has done a great job in the village, whether it's helping out in the parks department, helping our new staff, handling our catch basin program, being out there during snowstorms. Mike has been there. And he's, he's been a great asset to the village and I'm glad to have him on board. And I thank you all for this opportunity for him to move up in the next line of command. So I welcome you to MEO, Mike.
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to spending the rest of my career as an MEO. Appreciate it.
I'll take a picture with this guy.
I think we need Paul there, too.
Come on, Paul.
Come on.
I'm not going to turn the media, just get off.
Hold on. Greg wants a picture of me. I'm not shy.
From the parks department and now he's in.
Get in there, get in there.
It's, it's.
Come on, pictures with me.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
He's leaving and we congratulated him. We haven't voted yet.
Don't we vote yet?
And, and we truly, we appreciate everything you've done for the village, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's great when we're able to present these opportunities. I think this is very well deserved. And, you know, you're, you know, you've clearly proven yourself, you know, your supervisors think very highly of you, as does the rest of the village. So thank you for everything you've done and will continue to do.
Mayor, if I could just say, we said it before, but I think next month is going to be twenty-two years for Mike, so he really has done a great job. He steps up to the plate when there's hard work to be done. He's always there, you know, ready and willing to be able to jump onto those jobs and be part of the team. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other?
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Crum?
Yes.
Trusty Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Now you can leave.
Now, now it's official. All right, resolution.
Your call first.
What do we have?
Liz, at the, ten point one.
Okay, thank you.
That's a quick one, I think.
All right, so we're also going to move one other item up on the agenda, which is a discussion item, which is involving the AJP Senior Center Transportation Fee Policy.
So Mayor, this is something that the board asked us to put on for a discussion item. It's a continuing discussion that was started during the budget work sessions. And at that point in time, you know, the board did approve in the budget process the increase in transportation fees, which is the amount that the members pay towards transportation using, going on the bus. The board did approve in the license and fee schedule, adding two dollars for members for when there's local trips, but no, not any other fees involved, like not, you know, all going to stay local, going, going on local trips to local facilities, but not like an application or tickets or anything like that. And it went from two to four dollars and then from four to six dollars, the same thing for non-members. But there was also a discussion about whether or not the, there should be an increase in fees to, for when there's not other fees involved. And Liz Rhodefield can speak to that.
Hi, everyone. So after the budget meeting, I did a lot of thinking and in the past, I wasn't in favor of that increase, but I am now. As you might know, there's two different types of trips we go on. There's some trips that just, there's really no need for a fee, but we do charge, we were charging them two dollars just to have a fee. It's a shopping trip or a luncheon or something where we take them someplace, but they actually pay when they get there. Then we have another type of trip which has a fee attached to it, like museums, Broadway shows, like the Circle Line, you know, things like that. We have a lot of those types of trips. And at the time, the thought process was because those trips are kind of expensive, Broadway shows are very expensive now, we weren't charging an additional two dollars. But since then, I have had a change of heart because we do pay, we do pay tolls for these trips. Some of them are two hours away. So, you know, we have two different pots of money. We have the senior account and we have the general fund account. Currently, the two dollar fees that we were collecting, that goes, goes automatically to the general account. But at the budget meeting, I believe someone had mentioned, it doesn't matter where it goes as long as we're collecting it. So I would like to collect that extra two dollars per trip, keep that in my senior account because I pay the toll bills from that account if everyone's amenable to that.
So basically, the request now is to modify the fee schedule to add in an additional two dollar fee per, per member to go on the longer trips that typically have tolls in other accounts. And when Liz says there's two different accounts, they're both village accounts that are audited by our auditors, everything else. So there's, just want to give any sense that there's not. There's just one goes back to general fund revenue and the other is really for stays with the seniors program. And that's the one that goes with our not-for-profit agency there. And they basically, when there's things like tolls and everything else, Liz would pay the tolls out of that account.
Right. And we have come a long way. I mean, there was a time when we collected fees for yoga and tai chi and it sat in our seniors account. And then we devised a way to separate it out and that money goes right back to the village. So I'm actually, you know, I've been making some revenue for the past several years, which we didn't do before I got here, so.
All right, any questions or comments from the board? Yeah, Trusty Epstein?
So I have a question. So now for local trips, we're collecting four from everybody and six for non-members?
Members, mostly, mostly members attend our trips. We try to get them to join.
Okay, fair enough. And then you're saying if they go to a museum, et cetera, you want to have an extra two dollars, so it would be six and eight?
Right, well, no. For example, if it's thirty-three dollars for the Circle Line, we would charge the seniors thirty-five.
Would just be the.
Non-residents are not going on those trips.
Right, I understand.
They can't, I mean, not, not non-residents, not, non-members. You have to be a dues-paying member to attend our trips.
And I think what, I think what Trusty Epstein is, is getting, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, so it seems strange that for a local trip, it would be more expensive to, for the busing than for a farther trip.
Right, we brought this up during the fee schedule and I said the wear and tear on the vehicle, the gas and the toll are actually, I understand that you're, they are paying for the museum, the Broadway, Circle Line, but that's, that is a benefit that is being derived. I think that the transportation is still being offered and therefore shouldn't be at a lesser rate.
I'm confused. We're adding to all of those.
Right, no, but perhaps, perhaps the fee should be the same for, so four dollars and.
Four or six for members and non-members regardless.
Okay. I mean, I suppose we can do that.
About the two dollars, yeah.
Yeah, for some, for some people, a four dollar trip is going to be difficult because there's, we just, we, we do, we sell our trips three months at a time. I mean, I have my schedule here. They all want to sign up for everything. And if they don't sign up, they don't get on and you have to pay when you sign up, so, you know.
Well, they could, you can collect the parking fee, or not the parking, you can pay those fees, wouldn't you, when they're going? In other words, you could separate it out if it's a hardship. You could still collect it, but it doesn't have to be that day.
It'll have to be audited.
No, they have to pay. No, we have to, we're trying to really stick with people signing up and paying because it's been, the nicer you are, you know.
Oh, you get it. Well, I, I actually don't think it's, it should be that much of a horror because if they're paying for a local trip, this is, as I said, the wear and tear, the vehicle, the gas and the tolls, et cetera, that actually adds up to much more than a local trip.
As a quick question, when, with the local trips, I'm assuming it's typically just one or two people at a time, you know?
Let me explain. So the, we really, we really shouldn't say local. We should just say trips that don't have a fee. For example, if they go to Uncle Giuseppe's, that's in Yorktown. That's a forty-five minute ride and they were paying two dollars to go there. Now they'll be paying four, times twenty.
We're not getting any, they're not getting any tickets for, you're talking about the things that they're paying to do. So I mean, someone could go to Uncle Giuseppe's and spend five dollars, someone else could go to Uncle Giuseppe's and spend a hundred dollars.
Right, right. Some of them just like to go to get out of house and just, they have lunch as well on their own, you know? They'll do some shopping and they'll go to a diner and they'll have lunch. It's a social thing for them.
Right, if you're going to Circle Line, if you're going to the Broadway show, you're paying the fee already.
You're paying the fee.
But that fee that you're paying is, yeah, I think.
Most Broadway shows are.
I'm curious where everyone else stands on this.
I want to know what Uncle Giuseppe's is.
You know, it's like, they say it's like Arthur Avenue indoors, but it can't touch Arthur Avenue, in my opinion.
She also goes to Cold Spring Harbor. She does a lot of great trips.
Right. So curious thoughts from other board members? Trusty Crum?
No, it makes sense to pay this same for a big trip, I mean, at least the same for a big trip as a small trip. Or, you know, it's, it sounds like if you blended what you're saying the non-fee trips are, it's, I'm inferring that they're not longer than most of the ones that you, there is a fee for, correct? Most of the fees are, fee trips are in the city, it sounds like.
They're all over. I mean, we could go to Greenwich to a museum, that might cost six dollars, so we would add two dollars now, you know? I didn't want to.
My sense is to have the same fee for both. That's, you know, if you want my opinion.
So Liz, are you defining a long trip as one that incurs a fee once you get there? As opposed to a short trip?
No, there's, I would, I would say we have two types of trips. Trips that don't have a fee and trips that do have a fee. So museums, boat trips, exhibits, Broadway shows, dinner theaters, things like that.
So it has nothing to do with the distance?
Not really.
Right, has to do with.
Not really. That's why I was thinking just two dollars, you know?
Flat rate, done. Trusty Morino?
I agree with Liz.
Because again, we're not separating the, it's, the way our finance system is, it's called my senior center, there's really no way to, I mean, I brought these with you, but you can pass these down. This gives you an idea. We devise this deposit form so that we can easily pull out the general fund fees because I transfer them to Trish, you know, every few months. I go through all my deposits and I pull out the general fund fees. So it would be the non-resident lunches, it would be the two dollar trip, it would be the paint night, the yoga and the tai chi classes. And I pull them out and that's how I know how much to give Trish, to be transferred from the senior account to the general fund account. Now that's something we weren't doing for many years.
Right. And I would just ask if anyone's commenting on this, that we keep it private, does have names on it?
Sure, and I just told them we can share this.
I mean, I could have brought your blank one.
Liz, I absolutely understand where you're coming from regarding the, the fact that people are already paying a fee to go somewhere. I do like the idea of consistency regarding, regarding what we would charge for a ride.
I, I know what you're saying and I, about the consistency part, but you know, once upon a time when I started here, they used to go to Empire Casino and they were charging five dollars. And someone in this room said to me, why are you charging them five dollars if it doesn't cost anything? That's what they were, and this person said, that's silly. That's why we have the bus, so that we can get them to places. So we decided at that time, fifteen years, maybe fourteen years ago, charge the two dollar fee that holds them to it, we're getting something, they're coming. You know, I mean, you could charge whatever you want, but again, I think that some people will delay on signing up for certain things and then they'll miss out. Because this morning, our schedule went out on Friday and this morning, we had about fifty people before ten o'clock signing up for things. Yeah, it's crazy.
I mean, right now, so for the record, right now, I'm assuming based on our fee schedule, we're not charging anything for the bus ride when they're on these longer trips.
When they're on the trips, they charge a fee.
So currently, we're not charging anything for that, correct? So two dollars would be an increase over zero, last I checked. So I think this would start to get us to, I mean, it's inconsistent, but it would start to get us at least some, some funding back on this.
If you can afford a Broadway ticket.
You can afford a two dollar fee.
Broadway ticket plus two dollars.
Yes, that's, that's kind of where.
All right, so.
But there's also the toll.
Well, we don't want to make it.
Right, but two, but you've got twenty people on the bus, right? Two dollars times twenty, that pays for the toll, pretty much, you know?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
The Yonkers toll isn't that much. We go to Yonkers like once a month. So we're making money on, you know?
No, it's not, it's also the cost of the.
And we're still providing the service. All right, I mean, my, I guess, I guess, you know, given this conversation, I understand the viewpoint of the board. I think right now, my personal opinion would be just to keep this as is, see how it works. We can always adjust it in the future if need be. Would this be a fee schedule modification in the future?
Yes. We had, we had drafted one just in case, but yes, you don't have to do it, we can put on the next meeting.
No, right, we do have a resolution. I mean, I'm, I would, I would consider instituting this two dollar fee, especially since, you know, it has Liz's blessing.
So the other one you're doing for, I'm sorry, can I ask this question?
Please, Trusty Epstein.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just, I'm all over the place here because you said you wanted consistency, so the other one we're doing for, but when they go to the city and other museums and Circle Line, et cetera, we're going to two.
Right, and, and I, and I guess, I understand where Liz is coming from and, you know, trying to, you know.
That's not going to stop people.
Because we are going to have some people who are, you know, potentially would drop out.
They're paying a hundred.
For some of the lesser ones, not, not the Broadway shows, not the, but if you're going to a museum that is only charging six dollars, someone might, you know, block it in, I don't know.
I know it's Rybrook, but I have some seniors that can't even afford lunch. But, you know, they want to go on these trips and they save and they plan and they really want to go and sometimes they cancel because they'll say, I couldn't come up with the money. It's heartbreaking, really. So I really, I have mixed emotions about this. I like the idea of consistency as well, but I thought that, you know, it's a step ahead. You know, all across the board, it's an additional two dollars. You know what I'm saying? It's two dollars for the, the, the regular trips that don't have a fee and another two dollars that we were never charging for those other trips. I just figured it's a step forward and then maybe after a year, you know, I can probably, I can probably track how much I make from that and report back. And, you know, if it's a good amount, maybe that will be satisfactory to all. If it's peanuts, then maybe we would, you know, consider changing it in the future.
And it's something that we would change, you know, most likely, we, this would hold, you know, it, look, if we don't make a resolution, if we don't decide on this tonight, we're still charging zero for the bus. If we decide, you know, if we pass this tonight and we decide that we would, you know, we want to look at it for a year, see how it's working out, we, this would be up during our budget discussions in March, is when, unless we, we want other resolution. Trusty Epstein?
So I hear you and I'm, I'm okay with that, but I also saw, quite frankly, Liz, that by charging the extra amount, perhaps that amount of money, since it's in your account, could go towards the next bus that you will need? That was also my thought process, to defray the cost.
The next bus that we will need?
The buses come out of, that's, that's capital spending, so.
Also, I didn't say this earlier and I want to point this out as well. I know, I mean, I, we do a trip every single Wednesday, so we plan a lot of trips. And I've noticed the prices have gone up a lot everywhere, everywhere we go. Um, and I've noticed the prices have gone up a lot everywhere, everywhere we go. I mean, we used to go on trips, they were fifteen dollars, you know. Broadway shows were fifty dollars. Um, and I can't really get mezzanine seating, which I've tried that, I tried a few of those. But most, most theaters don't have elevators or, um, um, or escalators. I did a whole page about, there's only like a few that have them. So orchestra seating really is the only way for some of these people to go. I mean, I've been with some of that, that were difficult in the mezzanine and it was pretty scary. So that's another thing, you know. Um, over time, things will change, you know, as our, you know, it's cyclical. We'll get younger seniors and they'll be able to do those stairs and do the mezzanine and we can do cheaper seats.
Just so you know, they have handicap seats in theaters, so if you ask for them, those are usually the ones.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but when you have ten of those people, it's kind of difficult.
And it's harder, of course.
I know, yeah. We do try to do that, you know, but we don't know, when we book the show, we don't know who's coming. We book it and then people sign up and we do the best that we can, you know.
I'm sure it's, what you do is amazing and they're very lucky to have you. I've said that.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, I'll, I'll go along with whatever. We'll make it work, you know. Whatever makes sense to the board will be fine.
All right, well, my personal feeling, again, you know, I don't want to put undue hardship. Right now, we're charging nothing. I'm finally going to the two. I don't know where people stand. I, all right.
So it'll be four and two?
All right, it'll be the two dollars for this, for this.
For the trip, oh, trips.
Yeah, so Chris, let's, let's move this into resolution.
Okay. Considering a modification to the license and fee schedule, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves modifying the village license and fee schedule. And actually, you only need one line, transportation fee when another fee is involved, two dollars.
All right, can I have a motion second, please?
Motion. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes, and Liz, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Trusty Crum?
Yes.
Trusty Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, Liz. I know you put a tremendous amount of thought into this. I'm, I'm sure you were weighing it back and forth for days, so.
Thank you. I, I really enjoy it. Thank you so much for your support.
Torture Michael with this also?
No.
Just to give you a sense of Liz Rhoadfeld, she just came here because she just finished another meeting that she was at. She was at another group's meeting before here, right?
This one's so much more exciting.
Don't say that.
Thank you.
You're supposed to sweet talk us before we make the decision. All right, resolution number four, uh, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Violytics Americas, Inc. for road management software.
Sorry? Come on, my tablet wasn't cooperating. Whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enhance its capacity to assess road conditions on village streets. And whereas Rybrook has received a proposal from Violytics Americas, Inc. of Kinnell, Kinnelton, Kinnell one? Kinnell in New Jersey for road management software to improve analyzing village streets for any deficiencies. And whereas proposals a three-year agreement, total cost of thirty-three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars per year. And whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enter into a proposed agreement with Violytics Americas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the agreement with Violytics for road management software, subject to modification by council. Be it further resolved, the mayor administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Michael?
Sure.
I'll help Mike.
Chris, you want to start or Mike?
Sure, I can start. Um, so the prior program that we were looking at, which was Michelin, uh, we, the board had previously approved and the village was all excited to get going. We were just waiting for winter to come on, so then, because you need to have the tree, the, you want to have the leaf, the leaves off and also not, we don't want to have, not so much the leaves as much as you don't want snow on the ground. You've got to look at the pavement. It's using AI technology. We had it all set up, negotiated, had the agreement all finalized and then they decided not to continue with the software. So Michelin, which is primarily, as we know, a tire company, decided to get out of that area of their business and their company. So we, we contacted, we found out, well, who's your competitors and which one is the most liked product? We're not looking for one with every bell and whistle on it. We're looking for one that's affordable. And, uh, this was one of the two companies that we contacted and had demos with. And, uh, it's really exciting. This is actually a much even better product than the Michelin one, where we're able to basically drive the streets. This whole thing can be done in a period of less than a week. Um, we would have an entire system categorized, maintained, uh, pictures, images of, in ten-foot segments, uh, where you can go on and the system will load up. You drive the streets, it comes up, it'll load onto the software that we have. Not only now, what's been added to it is you can go and say, okay, not only have the ratings of the roads, which will help us for capital planning, but it will, and, and deciding on different types of products. But what we'll also do is you could say, okay, show us the worst potholes that are in the village. Show us the level, the medium potholes. We can categorize and find everything that we have. And it's not something that we, unlike Michelin, we could do this anytime. We can, if we pave a street, we can just videotape the street. We'll have everything, the ability to keep updating it as we do things. The other thing it captures is signage. So you could say, okay, it'll actually detect where your faded signs are, for instance. And then we'll go out and we'll verify and if something has to be replaced, we're able to do it. So has a lot of resources within the software. It's a really cool, really great tool that we think would be, you know, going from something that's very labor-intensive to something that is much more intuitive and can keep being updated to have a much more, um, robust, you know, road management system. What I missed, Michael?
That's, that answers everything in a nutshell.
I have a quick question.
Trusty Molino?
Thank you. Michael, is there cameras they put on the vehicle, on a vehicle or something?
This uses a iPhone. So it uses a particular model of iPhone and the program is basically intuitive and it's AI-based. It's very similar to what other companies do with the cameras all around the trucks, but it's not as hardcore, um, to the level of detail that those mobile cameras have. You know, and those are much more intense in, in the level of detail and what they're doing.
So this is a cam, is it, again, is it not a camera you put on your, on one of the village vehicles? It is?
It is a iPhone that mounts on the front of the dashboard.
Okay.
And it basically reads the road as you're driving down.
You have to drive at a slower speed to be able to capture it.
The speed you have to drive, there's a certain time of day that you have to do it. You don't want any shadows on the road, things of that nature, and it will do basically intervals. And then it'll log everything, it'll rate it.
With the phone?
Yep.
It's unbelievable. And the, the amount of information it gives you that you're able to work with is really helpful.
See that picture, that.
We should, we'll send you the links to the videos. It's incredible.
Yep, and then on the monitor, I mean, you'll get the crumbs and you could click on which crumb you want, on which part of the road. You'll be able to see that to ten foot.
No, no, it's a good way.
Right on your desktop, you'll see the condition of that road.
Program looks at the street and says, okay, there's a crack, there's a pothole and says, okay, we're going.
They'll tell you whether you have, just show me where the crack, the spider cracking is.
It'll do the algorithm.
Yep.
And says, this one you better fix this year, otherwise it's going to get much worse and.
I'm assuming.
It's not, it's not Siri, but it's.
Assuming though it shows up on a map, so you're able to.
Right.
It's all map-based and you could zoom in and it'll show, and you write down to the images that'll pull up on a particular ten-foot segment.
Trustee Epstein?
You tested this already on a particular road or several roads, or how, how was it?
We have not done that here. We did have a live demo of other municipalities and their information and their data, which was presented to us. So there are a number of other municipalities that are using this.
That we know?
Correct.
Okay, so it's reliable information?
And before you would go out and kind of like, it looks bad, it doesn't look.
Correct.
AI technology is incredible. We had a, a recent demo at our, one of our associations for the WAMOA group, where in Takahoe, the police department is using AI technology for parking enforcement. And they're actually, huh?
Who?
It's because they have multiple train station lots, so literally it captures the license plates when it's coming in. It'll tell you, you could pull in and you could say, all right, show me all the, you know, nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty, uh, Suburbans. And it'll pull up all the Suburbans in the lot, uh, if you're looking for anything. It'll tell you, you know, when, who's, which, which permits are expiring, are expired. Which permits are expired, which places that are parking for the day will expire in the next hour. And it'll tell you exactly where to go. It's incredible.
Big Brother's watch.
They did a video, they, where they're on schools, this is really scary. They were in schools and they said, "Show everyone that's held the Starbucks cup in the last hour." And all over the campus, it showed up forty pictures of kids with Starbucks cups. It's unbelievable. So.
That's scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this, this has a definitive use for us. But this has a really, it just shows you where the technology is becoming very much available. This is one that we think will do a lot of good for us.
All right, well, the good news is for any resident at home, we are using this to rate our road conditions. We will not be looking for personal information and whether you're driving with a Starbucks cup in your hand. Um, any other questions from the board?
Um, is the pricing similar to the, the, um, Michelin program?
What we would have gone for before.
It's a little bit more than Michelin, but it does more, but it's a lot less than the other one. Plus, we negotiated twenty-five percent off their pricing as a first mover here for Rybrook.
Right, and, and, and again, it's, this is not because we're deciding to change what we were going to do. This was because the initial vendor we had selected has gone out of business or stopped acting in this business.
And Mayor, the Michelin product was heavier pricing every third year, but then lighter pricing in the second and third years because you can do regular updates. This is going to allow us to do it. We do fill a pothole, we can do an update. We do a, we do a pave a road, we can do an update right after. Just re-drive the streets and we're done.
Like just re-driving the street?
Correct.
That's, that's wonderful. Trusty Crum?
Can we, if we vote yes, will we start using it effectively immediately or do we have to wait a certain length of time?
Well, we have to wait until we get the equipment and everything set up, so I mean, there'll be a little bit.
Right, but it's not like six months.
No, no, no.
And once you get it, a week, top, beginning to end.
Great. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Crum?
Yes.
Trusty Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. We look forward to seeing the results. Resolution number five, modifying a prior resolution to advance funds for a consultant to perform engineering services for a potential stormwater drainage modification project in the Brook Lane area.
Whereas on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the village accepted a proposal from Ramble Emeritus Engineering Services for the estimated cost of one hundred thousand dollars to perform engineering services related to a village stormwater drainage modification project in the Brook Lane area. And whereas on January fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the village also authorized that funding for this project be advanced from the current, from the twenty-five dash twenty-six general fund consultant account until those funds are reimbursed in full by the grant received by the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Resilient Investment through Support and Capital Program. Wow, that's about full.
That's why it's called RISC.
Yes, RISC. And whereas Ramble Engineering is currently walking in the Brook Lane, working in the Brook Lane area, which will not be completed until fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, resulting in a need to modify the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four approved resolution to advance funds to pay the consultant over two fiscal years. Now therefore be it resolved that the prior resolution is modified as follows. Be it further resolved that funds for this project shall be advanced through appropriation of unassigned fund balance to the general fund consulting service account in both fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six for the estimated engineering services completed and paid for in each respective fiscal year until those funds are reimbursed in full by the grant received from the RISC program.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
All right, so Chris, it sounds to me like this is not a change in the amount of money, not a change in any funding. It's just a change in making sure that this is appropriated through two years instead of the original one.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, now, I'm also glad to see that this is a New York State, uh, grant. So, um, our hope is, unlike some of the other federal grants that we've, um, that are a little dicey these days, this is going to be in place when it comes time to be reimbursed.
And it's well under, and it's well underway.
I wasn't trying to be funny, but is the RISC program at risk?
As far as we know, no. And I could tell you that we have regular meetings with them every couple of weeks. So we've been, Michael Nowak and I have been meeting with them, you know, like, not being a crystal ball, we don't believe so.
No, the reason I ask is because I know, as the mayor was alluding to, that the federal government is shutting down programs, which has had a ripple effect on the state in terms of it shutting down programs.
Yeah, this is one that, um, so what they're doing here, if you're, if you're just a refresh on this, this is the relocation of our storm system lines. Uh, if it's, I don't think this grant, I, listen, I wish I could predict all this stuff, but from what we can tell, it's funded. It's currently a project that's well underway, so they'd be stopping a project that's three quarters of the way in. Not that that's not impossible to do, but I will say this, either way, this is a project the village should be proceeding with. It's not really just the grant. It's, this is the relocation of the storm system.
Right.
Across Westchester Avenue, um, and into the, to divert it away from the brook.
Right, I remember seeing the diagrams of what the possibilities were.
Correct.
And it's, you know, certainly something that will have a positive effect on certain properties in there and hopefully help alleviate some of the, obviously, the brook is still coming down through that, uh, through, you know, where it runs currently.
Yes.
And so there, you know, but this will help alleviate some of the other flooding. And once the project's done, again, this is just the engineering and the study of it.
Which you have to monitor the flow and making sure you, you know, it has the capacity on the other side of the street. This is the detailed engineering for it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Crum?
Yes.
Trusty Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering awarding contract number twenty-two-five oh three, village street trees pruning and associated work.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has solicited bids for contract twenty-five dash oh three, village tree removal, pruning and associated work, which includes pruning, removal and individual stump grinding. And whereas the bid for contract twenty-five dash oh three was advertised in the Journal of News, is the official newspaper, on May fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and was also made available on the Empire State Purchasing Group bid system. And whereas at ten AM on May twentieth, all bids were opened and are summarized below in the resolution. We received a total of five bids. We received bids, sorry, we received a total of four bids. Central Tree Service, Savitree, New England Property Maintenance and Almstead. And now therefore be resolved that the following, following the review of the bids by the village administrator and engineer, the Board of Trustees has determined that the lowest bidder meeting the requirements is Almstead Tree Shrub and Lawn Company of New Rochelle, New York for the base bid amount of one forty-seven eight eighty-five with alternates A and B. And be it further resolved that the contract can be renewed annually for a period of up to five years. And be it further resolved that the mayor administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And correct me if I'm wrong, is this that we've been working with this company in the past, correct?
We, yeah, for five years now, but, um, and, and when you hear the pricing, just realize that's over a five-year period.
Right, no, that's not a single year. And certainly something important, we want to make sure that, you know, we have the ability to maintain the trees that are our responsibility.
Trees are expensive.
Yes, they are. Any questions or comments from the board?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Crum?
Yes.
Trusty Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering a donation to the Village of Portchester for the twenty-twenty-five Independence Day celebration and fireworks.
Whereas the Village of Portchester will host the two thousand twenty-five Independence Day celebration on July fourth. And whereas Rybrook Village Board would like to continue to assist with the event, now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook will pay five thousand dollars or six thousand dollars to, to be discussed to the Village of Portchester for twenty-twenty-five Independence Day celebration.
Thank you, Chris. Can, I guess we're going to hold off on the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Let's have the discussion first. Now, I remember when Hope used to come here and sing to us and we're asking for, for these funds and, um, you know, I, I kind of miss that, you know, because it was the whole, you know, the red, white and blue and, you know, this coast of Memorial Day. I feel like this was very appropriate. But, um, you know, it's been a long time since she's done that. You know, you know, my, my personal opinion on this is that I'm happy to support this. Um, and, you know, I think a lot of Rybrook residents go to the firework display. The only question I would have is, you know, whether we know whether they're getting other sponsors. A lot of times, they get, uh, corporate sponsors within the Village of Portchester. Uh, but any questions or comments? I mean, they're asking for an increase. In the past, we've paid five thousand. They're asking for an increase of six thousand. I'm personally okay with that, but I'm opening this up to discussion among the board.
Mayor, just.
Increase to six thousand.
Chris, yeah, please.
Just want to give a point of clarification.
An increase, oh. An increase of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Point of clarification for everyone. I just want to make sure you know, I did call and ask what the reason was for the increase. Is it, are you doing more fireworks? We're doing drones this year? Or what are we doing? And the answer was just, it was because they're more expensive this year. That was the answer.
Right. And it does make sense. One of the nice things about the Portchester Firework Display is that it's done on July 4. A lot of other displays to keep costs a little bit lower is on July 3. This is nice. It's on July 4 by a very famous company. I'm assuming they're sticking with that same company. You know, but it's always, to me, I always think it's one of the better firework displays around. I've been to some in other municipalities, and this to me always is the best one. Unfortunately, I am going to be unable to make it this year. I always go, I go every single year. I will be missing it this year, simply because I'm going to be at a wedding. But.
The nerve of this.
I will be in the Cradle of Freedom, Philadelphia on July 4.
Oh, there you go. So, you know, I guess, like I said, I'm, I'm fine raising this to the amount of $6,000. And I welcome comments from the board. Trustee Crumb?
This isn't really factual, but I read online that they're paying a lot for this.
Oh, yeah.
This is like, something like 10%, I think, of the total cost. I don't know for.
Probably less.
Probably less. Yeah. OK. So I'm fine with the six, for sure.
It's a wonderful celebration. And I know that a lot of Rybrook residents take advantage of it. And I think that it's a good use of our funds, and I look forward to representing us.
Great. Thing trustee Epstein just said she's going. Trustee Morino?
Well, I'll definitely be there, and it's well worth the expense.
All right. So can I have a motion second, please, to approve the amount of $6,000 for the donation?
So moved.
Second.
Yep, it was that one.
Really? I really have a hearing.
That was lingering.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Hold you up there.
Wow.
All right.
So I was again, I, trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Crumb?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And we look forward to the, to the fireworks display. I think this is a great community event and a great partnership between the Village of Portchester and Village of Rybrook. And again, I know a lot of our residents attend that. So thank you for the planning committee that puts that together. All right, resolution number eight, considering reallocation of capital project funds and a close of capital project.
OK, be resolved that following transfers between capital projects be approved for fiscal year 25-24-25. There's a transfer from one capital project for police vehicles to, to another, to the updated one for police vehicles in the amount of $690, $690 and 12 cents. And the same thing is another one from police vehicles to a capital project for the police vehicle tablet replacement in the total amount of $664 and 52 cents. And be it further resolved that the following capital project with zero fund balance be closed and removed from the capital project length schedule, and that's the staffing for, the staff, the vehicle, the electric vehicle that we have as our pool car. Let's just close on that project.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Again, thank you to Trish and all the staff that keep us honest here and keep the books.
Keep the books.
In proper order.
In proper order.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Crumb?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine, considering approval of the minutes for the meetings held on March 25 and April 8, 2025.
And therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for March 25 and April 8, 2025.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Oh, sorry. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, administrators' report.
Okay, just two quick items, and they're both event related. So we have an ice cream event, the donation, due to the donation of the Bellywet Club. That's this Friday, May 30, at Pine Ridge Park from 6:00 to 7:30. That's an earlier than we usually do those types of events. But Bellywet Club wanted to do something for the community, make a donation. They'll also be present at the event. And it's a nice thing for the community, have a little early ice cream before the summer kicks in. And the other item is just for next month, which is the Rybrook birthdays coming up. That's to Saturday, June 14, from 12 to 4. And a reminder, that's going to be at the King Street Athletic Fields in Rybrook, which is where we were last year. But I'd like to, the board is supportive of keeping at that location. Thank you. That's it?
OK. All right. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, the next meetings. Sorry? Yes, go ahead.
6:30.
I'll be brief. I just really want to give a big thank you to our highway staff and who are performing here. Last, take this month of May, they've really helped us out a lot, particularly me as well. Take a May 10, they helped out also our senior center, who's also coordinator, Liz Rothfeld, and as well as they helped out with the Eagle Scale Project, which their union contributed to, which represents our highway park staff